We're now in session. Good morning, everyone. We have any items from the public. Here now need a motion to approve. I'm sorry.
I would like to make an announcement. Some forty years ago, a man led the crosswalk here in Martinsburg, and it continues today. So I invite the community, I invite this county commission, to be a part of that crosswalk as we recognize what Jesus did in as he hung on the cross and those last seven words that came out of his mouth. It starts at ten o'clock at Trinity United Methodist Church, and we have different locations all over the community. And again, I invite each of you to participate if you are able. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of the state budget revision.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Just a quick question. What day, Saturday or Sunday?
No, it's Friday.
Friday, good Friday.
Good Friday.
Okay, on the purchase order log, by having questions for Tracy. Here now, thank you Tracy. We have no internal budget revision this week.
No, sir.
We do have a change in status from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections, to transfer Deidra Carroll from custodial to DRC as a driver effective five one twenty-five with a salary change from thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars to thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Have a letter of resignation received from Mike Lang, Chief Deputy Court Marshal for Steve Thomas, Deputy Court Marshal Two, effective four thirty twenty-five. And we have a letter of resignation received from Jennifer Swisher, Director of Emergency Communications for Destiny Talke, Call Taker Trainee, effective four ten twenty-five. Approval of minutes for April ten, everybody was here. April fifteenth, Vice President Catlett and Commissioner Boyd were not present. We can still leave those in. We do have a canceled check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office, and there's a letter request for the endorsement of sale of beer and alcohol after West Virginia Regional Airport Authority. So that's part of the consent agenda. And I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda for this week.
The sale is for the Independence Day celebration.
Yes, sir.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you. And we're... Morning, Mr. Hess. You ready to go?
Good morning, good morning. I want to mention that microgrid bill was watching you guys. You guys did a wonderful job fighting for that thing.
Thank you.
If it wasn't for you guys, we wouldn't have got that thirty percent. But the state was pretty rough on you, man.
The governor's been very determined.
There you were.
On this.
Definitely was.
But yeah, it... I do believe that had we not been to Trost and those several days and working with everybody that we had the ability to work with, it would come out much, much different.
You wouldn't have gotten anything. You guys saved us that thirty percent.
Well, thank you.
Good job. I just have this morning, I do have one taxpayer error exoneration I had to bring to you, and it's for Christopher Swain. He lived in Berkeley County and moved to Morgan County, but he filed here. He shouldn't have, but it was taxpayer error. And it's only an amount of seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
A motion to approve the personal tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No? Those are negative.
And I do have for office air personal property, we do have seven, I think, the exonerations I had to bring to you for reasons that's listed there. And total those up, they come up to sixteen hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. I gotta get your approval on that.
A motion, I need a motion to approve the personal tax exoneration as presented by the assessor.
So move, Mr. President. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, board meeting reports, Mr. Hardy.
So had one board meeting this week with the water department. It's kind of a short meeting. Kind of ran through all the extensions and all the good things that's going on at the water department. Made some payments for, paid some bills for the new water plant and the river plant. That project is moving right along. Contractors doing a great job down there. Everyone seems really happy with the contractor and the progress of that project. Talked about the water filling station for South Berkeley that's being explored for our water haulers and access to water in South Berkeley. And then the bid was awarded for the two new water tanks. And that was a company out of Chicago. I believe it was called Chicago. I can't remember the name of the company. But just a tick over eighteen million dollars for those two water storage tanks. One of those will be on Ridge Road, and I think the other one's going out in kind of South Berkeley.
It's near the Clorox facility.
Near the Clorox facility. So those two tanks are out to bid, and I think that stuff's gonna happen pretty quickly. Those tanks tend to go up pretty quickly. So that's really the only thing that I have to report. That's the only meeting that I've had so far this week.
Very good, thank you.
Commissioner Whitaker.
I have no meetings to report on, but one are coming up.
I've got quite a list here. Kind of been a busy week. Last Thursday, I met with the fire board, and everything there is really smooth. I give a lot of credit to those chiefs and our fire board staff for working together and taking care of their business. But also, the fire board has sent out their delinquent letters. And they've also... The second half of the commercial fees will be sent out in May. And the Baker High Steve came and requested that the recruit class that we currently have going through, they would like to do a small memorial on the site at the fire station for Lieutenant Taylor. And they gave a design of it, and it's very, very nice. And that was approved to be done. On Monday, I was on the radio with WRNR, obviously talking about the Senate Bill twenty-fourteen in reference to the data centers. And of course, that's always, that's been a topic of the discussion really there for the past week. Tuesday, we came in, which both my other former commissioners were here as well, to lay the levy at the thirteen thirty-nine rate. And it's good to know that that rate has remained the same for a number of years. So trying to be responsible for those dollars. On Wednesday, Gary and I, along with Jack, met with the health department on a construction meeting. That project is really nice. It's winding down. That may have been our last meeting, perhaps one more. But still waiting on the doors there. Yesterday, traveled to Jefferson County with Chad and Aleah to discuss with Jefferson County how they do their impact fees. And they've been doing this for over twenty years. So they gave us some insight, and we appreciate their information as well. Yesterday, oh, and the day report. I was not able to go to that meeting because of going to Jefferson, but I think Gary reported that project's moving very well. So they're hanging sheet rock there now. So that project's moving very nicely. Yesterday evening, also had the criminal justice board. We did not have a quorum, so there are no decisions made on anything. But just as an update, we currently have three hundred and sixty-eight people come through our day report center. Our DUI program currently has about twenty-five people in it. Home confinement currently has a hundred and thirty-two people in it. And since July of last year, they've had two hundred and six folks come through there, and twenty-seven of those have been revoked. So just to show you, there are checks and balances and consequences. So community service project, community service staff is going, still very busy. They currently have seventy-five participants in that and two hundred and twenty-four referrals, and they've taken two hundred and seven they felt that would work in their programs. And then the community service, they've put back in this community seventy-seven hundred and sixty-three hours that have been back in, backed out into to help with the cleanup of trash and litter along the roadways, the recycle center, the Goodwill. There are several different nonprofits that they work with, the Humane Society, the Youth Fair, and South Berkeley Little League. They've done a hundred and fifty hours there. So they're very busy. And there's lots of good things there not only to help people, you know, get their feet back under them, but yet at the same time, hold them accountable. So that kind of rounded out my week this week. So we do have a reappointment package received from Sean Wilford for the Central Dispatch Advisory Committee. You know, Sean is our planner, I'm sorry, emergency manager. So, you know, he plays a very close role with the nine-one-one board. So we do not have our county commission, our honorary county commissioner this week. And are we close enough to do our bid opening? Oh, wait a few minutes.
Want to let Chad, you could bump Chad up for the ten, his ten twenty.
Sure. Thank you, that'll take care of us. Excuse me? Absolutely, yes. Yeah, I'd like to, somebody make it.
Taking action on that.
I'll make the motion to reappoint, Mr. Wilford.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Penny.
Morning.
Morning.
In November, an RFP was issued for thermal imaging cameras. This was a budget request that emergency management in the fire department had put in as part of the fiscal year twenty-five budget for the fire department. The RFPs were opened on December nineteenth. Two bids were received. After review, only one of those bids qualified. The bid that did not qualify, the cameras were not rated for fire department use. The request is to go with the bid from Whitmer Public Safety for the twenty-three thermal imaging cameras, which includes twenty-three lanyards, which attaches them to their turnout gear coats. The total purchase amount for that is twenty-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. And that is in their budget.
Okay. You've heard the presentation by Chad. And these thermal imagers are really, really important for the fire service. Mainly designed to be able to locate folks or locate the fire inside the building and get an idea of the temperatures inside of the room or building, whatever. But also for their safety of being able to find a way back out. A lot of times, that's a little bit of a challenge. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the thermal imagers.
So move, Mr. President.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
What size, what do these things look like? Like, I've never seen anything like.
So the older thermal imagers were big. They were like holding mini TVs in your hand. These are smaller. They're...
They actually have like a lanyard that attaches.
They do, they have a lanyard and a quick. So when they pull it, it has a quick button on the back. So think of like a large TV remote with like a camera head on the end of it. Almost like a pistol grip.
Right. Helps them be able to find victims that are in the homes through the smoke and also be able to retreat back out if they need to find a way out.
It can see through all the smoke into the doorways and all that stuff. So it's very vital equipment for them.
Eddie, he does think he's a firefighter now. When he fights a fire with the water hose.
He's not quite old enough to understand all the technology. So...
I'm just a paramedic. I only know what I see.
And he started out, they had like hand pumpers. They had like guys.
Close. Close.
And you better find your own way. But the first technology of that actually came out of the military. And there was a camera on the side of a special helmet that had a shield that pulled down in front, and that was your screen. And that was the first technology of thermal imaging. And we were fortunate enough to be able to get one in the city. And so that one guy, this one person, that's it. And he directed everybody else kind of where to go and find your way. But the technology's come a long way, and we're very fortunate for that.
It's a very vital piece of equipment.
It is.
So we'll vote on it here and get this equipment to work.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Penny, the list of folks that we have on the boards that... I would like, every one of those... I'm assuming, I don't want to take it out of context, but I would assume that you would like to appoint Greg Rowe back to the water district.
Yes.
And I would assume that, Jim, that you would like to have Chip Leatherman reappointed. If we could get reappointment letters sent back out to those folks on that list.
Yes, Tracy will do that. It's off to her machine. She says those out in May.
Very good. Very good, thank you. Okay, all right. So next open will be our bid opening for RFP Group Health Benefits.
Yes, Mr. President. You have the certification of publication. You did place this on your website. We gave it our best all and by we. I'll say Deputy County Administrator Chad Weinbrenner has worked diligently the past six weeks on answering questions and getting this into the hands of people that we knew had interest. If the commission will recall, we were faced with a significant premium increase from our current provider. I met with you in session, and we discussed, and you made the decision to see what the market had to bear. It looks to me as if you have six responses. So we're anxious to see. This is impactful to both your budget and your employees' budgets personally. So you have six of them, and at least you had good interest.
Very good.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Number you?
Yeah. And this is, this first bid is from USI Insurance Services out of Wheeling, West Virginia. The amount is three million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. And that's... That's not the only bid number here. There's also a bid of three million, eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. And then the third attachment is for the amount of three million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and thirty-nine dollars. The next bid, which is the final one, is three million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. The next bid, which is the final one, is $3,982,646.
So, they gave multiple options, I guess?
I guess, different coverages.
Looks like a dog ear for your nose.
Yeah, that one's got $25 written on the front.
Sounds good, we'll take it.
Not sure how much, how good the coverage is.
Not sure you want to get sick or not.
I don't know. I also don't know. Anyway.
I didn't read it.
Yeah. This is from One Digital Benefits out of Winchester, Virginia. And it's the number 25 per employee per month. Good luck with that. All right, the next is Standard Insurance Company out of Portland, Oregon. They did not quote the health insurance, they quoted dental and vision. And the dental is 140,000, I'm sorry, 104,857. And the vision annual premium is $37,967. And the total bid price for the vision care is $49,057. There's a highlighted section in this folder that says, "See attached renewal extension of your current contract with 0% interest rate guaranteed until 7/1/2028," behind the white tab. So, let me find the white tab. This is from Avisis. Of Tempe, Arizona. And the total bid price is $30,766.74 and $33,829. Or that will have to be, to dig through this to find out everything that they're. Yeah, I would assume vision and dental. And Highmark out of Parkersburg, West Virginia. And the total bid price is $2,989,234. That was painful.
Yes.
That's all we need for that. And I'd like to thank everybody that had bidded on that insurance for the county. And next up is Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor. Good morning, Will.
Hopefully, this will be a little less painful. This morning, we have the third estate hearing that we've had before this body for the estate of James Lewis III. As a bit of background, on April 18th, 2024, James Lewis III passed away intestate without a will, resident of Berkeley County. On May 21st, 2024, Leola Lewis, the decedent's mother, yet not an heir-at-law of the decedent, remotely qualified as the administratrix after being issued a corporate surety bond from Travelers Casualty and Surety Company of America via Smith, Nathan, Bush Insurance for $20,000. On July 17th, 2024, the administratrix sought to resign as a personal representative for her son's estate and file the petition to do just that. An estate hearing was scheduled to allow for Leola Lewis's resignation on September 12th, 2024. One day prior to said estate hearing, the fiduciary supervisor's office received a one-sentence email from the administratrix's attorney, Amanda Lewis, stating that her client wished to withdraw her petition to resign. On September 16th, 2024, the decedent's daughter and sole heir-at-law Carly Lewis petitioned to have the administratrix removed for delinquency in her filing of the appraisement of estate assets in violation of West Virginia law. An estate hearing was once again scheduled for November 14th, 2024 regarding Ms. Lewis's removal for delinquency. At that November hearing, the administratrix by counsel objected to her removal, stating that while the administratrix was indeed delinquent, she was also traveling, had only retained counsel recently, and had difficulty ascertaining various financial information critical to completing the appraisement documents as required. In response, this commission gave Ms. Lewis a 30-day extension to file the appraisement. On December 12th, 2024, the administratrix complied with this commission's deadline and completed the appraisement documents. However, upon inspection, the fiduciary supervisor's office noticed that the administratrix's surety bond was extremely low. She was bonded for $20,000 as stated and listed she was in control of over $120,000 intangible and intangible probate assets. As such, our office ordered the administratrix's bond be increased immediately. On January 2nd, 2025, the estate was published in the local newspaper as required by law, triggering the 60-day claim period. However, the estate's bond limit remained at a mere $20,000. On February 20th, 2025, my office wrote a letter attached to your read-ahead demanding Ms. Lewis increase her surety bond limit as ordered, otherwise risking removal in accordance with West Virginia law. In so doing, this office, my office, gave a deadline of March 21st, 2025 to increase the bond referenced. My office received no response from either the administratrix or her attorney until yesterday. The administratrix's attorney indicated that her client would not contest her removal and would not increase her bond. She awaits this body's order of her removal. Therefore, without objection or input from Carly Lewis or her attorney, I don't know if that's, okay. Without that input or any other interested party in the audience, I ask for this commission's consideration for the three following items. There are actually three separate things that I think need three separate votes, if that's all right. The first, if it's all right, is going to be for your consideration for the removal of Leola Lewis as the administratrix for the estate of James Lewis III.
Do I need a motion for the removal of Leola Lewis on this estate?
I move.
I second.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? You know, I remembered giving this extension back some time ago to try and get this settled, and it did not work out.
It did not.
Yeah. Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The second issue for your consideration would be an order barring Leola Lewis from collecting any fiduciary compensation from the estate of James Lewis III. She would otherwise be able to compensate herself through West Virginia law.
You've heard a motion to prevent Leola Lewis from receiving any of the.
Fiduciary compensation.
Fiduciary compensation.
I move.
Second.
Then properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
And lastly, I ask for your consideration for an order requiring Leola Lewis to file an interim settlement of accounts to the fiduciary supervisor's office within 30 days of today's date, and that'll be it.
Very good. And that order is to have Ms. Lewis present all her findings to the fiduciary office.
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days. All in favor, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve.
Remove to accept that recommendation.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mercifully, that is it.
Yeah, well, to try to give folks the benefit of the doubt to get things accomplished, unfortunately.
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Will.
Okay. Next up is interview for the Bertha County Emergency Ambulance Authority. Familiar face around here. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good to see you. And if you would, please state your name for the record and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. I have some resumes, if I may give them to you.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. I am Carol Spessert, and I have lived my life in Berkeley County. I've raised my children here in Berkeley County. Now, my grandchildren are being raised in Berkeley County. I've been employed by Berkeley County probably most of my life. I started at the Emergency 911 Center back when we had one dispatcher in the old days and worked there. I went to work for Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Authority in the early 90s and was employed there for about 12 years before I went into nursing. So, I nursed for another 12, 13 years, and then I went into education. So, I'm now, pardon me, teaching at Blue Ridge, nursing students. So, I understood that there might be a need for the authority to have another representative, and I felt that my background would enable me to offer some insight to the fellow members and perhaps my experience and things could, you know, be utilized to help Berkeley County. I understand, you know, as we all do, it's growing by leaps and bounds. The EMS service certainly needs to continue that growth, and I'd like to be involved in seeing our future EMS system during the county.
Very good.
Oh, thanks.
I know you've touched a lot of lives, there's no doubt about that.
Well, thank you.
Always appreciated you and your services and.
I started at South Berkeley as a volunteer, that's how I met Eddie, and it's continued. We shared a few scenes together.
There you go, that's right. John?
Not really any questions, just thank you very much for all your years of service. I was just looking over your resume here. Thank you very much for providing us lots of experience.
Thank you.
Looks like a lot of cool experiences. You've done a lot of.
Diverse things.
Diverse and exciting things, you know, yes, from working for the state medical examiner to hospice, which is a very tough job and can be very tasking.
Yes.
So, yeah, so no, just a really great resume, and thank you for your years and years of service.
Oh, thank you.
We appreciate you and.
That means a lot. Thank you.
I always say people have a heart for public service. I don't know, I don't know what it is, but certain people just have a heart for public service and.
I call it a calling. I really believe that if you go into it with the right reasons, it's a calling, you know.
Well, thank you for having.
And I can't get out of it, I don't know what it is, here I am.
That's good. Well, thank you for having that calling.
Thank you.
I can remember some of the first ambulance authority meetings that I went to at the old station.
Yes.
And I've said this, told the story before, the first one I ever went to lasted until about 1:30 in the morning.
Oh, the good old days, sir.
Yeah, yeah. And it was quite eye-opening, and you know, once you have that little bit of feeling to want to try to give back to the community, it does blossom into more stuff.
It does, it really does.
And I want to thank you. There's not a question I can ask you that I don't already know or even make a statement other than thank you for your willingness to serve the county and to give back.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President.
Your resume is just top-notch when it comes to, you know, your services that you can provide and the thoughts and feelings, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
When I looked over, I called my homework last night, smiled when I saw your references. Mary was the first smiling, and I thought, Sarita, I hadn't talked to Sarita for quite a while.
Yeah, she's doing well.
Of course, we see joy often.
Yes.
But, you know, when you, when you look at, look at your resume, it's kind of like full circle.
Yes.
You know, not only did you take the calls and give direction, but then you were the person receiving the direction, and then you transferred, you know, to City Hospital and to the ER, and now you're teaching.
Yes.
So, it's kind of like a full circle, and here you are.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I told my husband last night when we were talking about this. I said, I feel like, you know, you come full circle in life.
And despite all that, Eddie, she's here.
She is here.
Our community needs us.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, your husband Mark, I know he just recently retired, and you know, we're just a family of service.
Yes.
And we appreciate everything that you've given.
Well, thank you. I do feel connected to the community, you know, I've been here forever, my son has a business here in the community, my youngest son polices our county, and I just, it's home, and I'd like to be able to offer what I can. home, and I'd like to be able to offer what I can.
Very good. Well, I mean, that's Commissioner Catlett's board, and obviously, he's on vacation this week.
Oh, good for him.
Yeah, good for him. So, but thank you, Carol, for applying, and good seeing you.
Good seeing you guys. You have a wonderful weekend.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go bring us to the end of our meeting. Are there any items from the public? Are there any, and do we have any need for executive session? No, sir, we do not. So need a motion to go into recess.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recess.
We are on recess. Have a great week, everybody.